This is regular meeting of the Navasota City Council's called to order on Monday, the 13th of November in council chambers. Let the record show all council members are present. Welcome and thank you for being here tonight. We ask that you put your cellphones into silent mode and visitors, please sign in. If you wish to speak under visitors' remarks, please fill out the form found in bag and state your name and address at the podium as we must document all meeting business and remarks limited to three minutes. Tonight's invocation, we led by Pastor Mac Vaughn, then followed by the pledges.
I look at all those smiling faces. Golly, what are y'all keeping to yourself that you're smiling about, huh? We're lucky, you know, think about it, to have that group of people. We really are in that group of people. Well, let's pray. Oh gracious and heavenly God, we've come with heavy hearts tonight with all that's going on in the world. The babies that are being slaughtered and even the babies being slaughtered in our own country. It's so sad. War is everywhere. The evil one is wandering with free will. There's so many that don't speak up about what's going on in the atrocities. May we never be guilty of that. Oh God, I just, my heart goes out to our first responders, law enforcement, our military, all of those that is in turmoil across this land. God, we just ask for peace to settle in upon our world. We need to speak up, God, and do something. Give us the strength. Give us the tenacity to do what we need to do. May your peace and gentleness settle in upon each and every one of us. May we find that and realize that, God, you're in control of everything. Oh God, we just thank you. If we didn't have you, God, in Christ Jesus, we'd be in real trouble. God, on a uptick this evening, thank you so much for those who have assembled here this evening that come with interest in their hearts for their city, for the citizens and all that live here in Grimes County. God be with us now. Let your Spirit rest upon us. May you fill us with joy and expectation that things are going to be better. We thank you for those that are willing to serve. God bless them. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Pardon, three remarks of visitors. First, we have Brenda Story.
Thank you for letting us come to the microphone. I'm Brenda Story with the Navasota Garden Club and also the Grimes County Historical Commission. And Sabrina is also with the Navasota Garden Club. And just letting you know that we'd like to be invited on any planning you have with the Horlock House. There's a lot of reasons why we'd like to be involved. And if you would include us and invite us to those planning meetings, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for serving Navasota.
Mayor and council, on our next regular meeting on, I think it's the 27th of November at 6 o'clock, one of your items that we'll be talking about during our regular meeting, it will be a workshop item, but it will be during your regular meeting. We'll all be about updating you about the Navasota Artists and Residents Program, as well as discussions about the Horlock House and the upkeep and maintenance requirements needed for that and have discussion about what are the next steps.
Next, we have Audrey Salz. Good evening.
I am here, Mrs. Inez Corle, 83-year young lady have come back home and she's ill, very ill, y'all. So pray for her. She's wanting to put a manufactured home on her property at 1219 Saul Street. And I'm asking the council to grant her a variance. And that's it. We're trying to resurrect Saul Street and by her coming back home, she says that's where she want to come and she wants to die here in Navasota. So I hate to use the word die, but to die is a good thing. So anyway, I'm here on her behalf requesting that you guys consider granting her a variance to move her manufactured home. She's already paid the $2,115 to the city to get the water. The water is already done. The sewage is already done. The entry came out and marked the property last week. So she's already been approved for a manufactured home. And it's been approved. So I just asked you guys to consider. Thank you.
Mayor and council, at this time, I'm going to ask Lupe to come up and talk to you about what our ordinance says directly about manufactured homes, AKA mobile homes. Lupe, while he's coming up, one of the things that staff has talked about related to this is maybe doing a workshop sometime first quarter of next year, either January, February timeframe. But I'm going to let Lupe talk about what the ordinance specifically says and those issues related to variances.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, good evening. Lupe Diostato, Development Services Director. As Jason stated, I'm just going to briefly summarize what the current ordinance is, just for refreshing our memory and for reference. So the current ordinance for manufactured homes was adopted on November 10, 2008, approximately 15 years ago. The majority of the cities have since passed similar ordinances. But basically, our ordinance defines manufactured homes as those built after June 15, 1976, and mobile homes as those built before June 15, 1976. And it's all based on the actual code that they're constructed to. The current ordinance prohibits the installation of manufactured and mobile homes on vacant land outside of a licensed park, right? So there's, you know, if you have vacant land within the city that's not in a manufactured home park, it's not permitted. However, the ordinance does allow a one-time replacement. If you had a manufactured home at the time of the ordinance passage, our ordinance allows a one-time replacement with a newer model for your property. And then in regards to the variance, staff did consult with legal counsel a few weeks ago about this particular question. I met with Ms. Corles and talked to her about the standards and everything. And basically, the current ordinance doesn't have and doesn't outline a variance procedure. Whether that was done intentionally or not, you know, that's, you know, you'd have to go back all the way to 2008 and try to find some notes. But the current ordinance doesn't have a variance procedure. And so if one was to be entertained, then I think that maybe that's something that will be discussed at that future workshop that Jason mentioned, so.
Mayor and council, just to let you know, the reason that Lupe can come up and say these things during the citizen comment portion is it's a recitation of existing facts and facts and a desire to kick it to or move it or have another future meeting on the subject matter. So this is completely in line with the Open Meetings Act, in case you're wondering.
Be put on a future agenda.
Correct. That's right. Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Archie Salz.
Hello. If I hand these out, does that go against my time?
No, you have total of three minutes.
Yes, I have.
So just hurry, do it real fast.
Okay. I want everybody to see. My name is Archie, Reverend Archie Salz. And I, 1408 Saul Street, what I presented to you is a plat of what my twin sister had asked for a variance. I wanted to talk really negative about the city of Navasota, but I love this city. And what you have before you is a overview of the cesspool. You call it the wastewater treatment plant. And Ms. Inez want to put her house four doors of four lots from the wastewater treatment plant. Why would she want to put her house there?
We can't answer you.
Because she grew up three doors from where the city put the wastewater treatment plant. We didn't ask for that. We're asking for a variance for an 80-some-year-old lady to come back home and put a manufactured home on property that she owns, which happens to be three lots from the entrance of the wastewater treatment plant. Every time you flush your toilet, all of your remains go to our front or back door. This lady is asking for a variance to put her home where she grew up. It wasn't there when she was growing up, but that's the only property she had. And she's asking the city of Navasota to allow her, she can't afford the other modular home. They're $200,000-plus. She can't afford that. So if you look at this lot, you look at the plat that I sent to you and look at, it's four lots from the cesspool. And we're asking the city to allow a variance for her to put a manufactured home where she owns property. Is that too hard to ask? Bert Miller, your father told me 40 years ago, he said, Archie.
Three minutes, Mayor. Yeah, time's up.
He said, we can't move your property. It's called just cause. The city never asked us to relocate.
Okay, we thank you for your comments. And I think as you heard, Mr. Weeks say-
I'm just saying, I mean, I think he should allow this lady to put a modular home, not a modular home, but a manufactured home on Saul Street. That's where it is, Saul Street. Everybody else said on Saul Street. We said it's okay because we live there. We live right there. In fact, our parents, it's two doors, it's two lots from the cesspool.
All right. Thank you.
So I'm asking the city to grant, allow this lady to live and put a manufactured home on Saul Street. Is that too much to ask?
Thank you. Apprenticeship Week. Whereas National Apprenticeship Act of 2015 established a comprehensive system of partnerships among employers, labor, educators, and federal and state governments, which has helped shape skill training for succeeding generations. And 2023 marks the ninth annual National Apprenticeship Week across the country, highlighting the benefits of apprenticeship and preparing a highly skilled workforce to meet the talent needs of employers across diverse industries. National Apprenticeship Week is a national celebration that offers leaders a chance to demonstrate their support for apprenticeship and gives apprenticeship sponsors the opportunity to showcase their programs, help shape, strengthen economic structures of our communities, also demonstrate leadership across our nation, enhance productivity, and promote healthy competition. Whereas the City of Navasota appreciates and congratulates all those involved with this worthwhile endeavor, which continues to create a positive impact on lives, careers, and businesses in our communities. We have proclaimed, I, Bert Miller, Mayor of the City of Navasota, do hereby proclaim that November 13 through 19, 2023 is National Apprenticeship Week. Oh.
That's all right. Mayor, at this time, I'm going to ask Peggy Johnson, our HR Director, to come up and do introduction of our new employee.
Good evening. Madam Miller, council members, Peggy Johnson, Human Resource Director. Tonight, I would like to introduce Victoria Gutierrez. Victoria Gutierrez moved to Navasota by the way of California and Montana in January. She wanted to get involved in her new community. And a neighbor told her she should try joining the fire department. A little over a year ago, Victoria turned her application in to become a volunteer firefighter and began her training. During this time, she felt this was something she would like to make a career out of and beginning taking EMT classes. After working through our budget and receiving more full-time firefighter positions, Chief Kokoski approached Victoria about becoming the first sponsored fire cadet for the Navasota Fire Department and fielded one, and filling one of the new open firefighters position up on completion. And she said, yes. Victoria is currently in the Fall Teaks Fire Academy and is scheduled to complete and graduate in February of 2024. So we'd like to welcome fire cadet Victoria Gutierrez.
Now, Mayor, Ms. Johnson's going to now do a recognition of a service award.
Okay. Madam Miller, council members, Peggy Johnson, Human Resource Director, our recognition of service award tonight goes out to Guadalupe Diostado.
Pretty close.
Hired in 2013 as the city of Navasota, I'm sorry, Lupe. City of Navasota, informational technology specialist. And he was promoted May 18, 2017 to our Community Development Director. And his job title changed on January the 2nd of 2023 to the Development Services Director. I would like to present this certificate of achievement in appreciation of 10 years of dedicated services to the city of Navasota.
Spancy, to come up and give you your annual Oakland Cemetery update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle Spansky, Executive Administrative Assistant. I'm here tonight to give you our annual Oakland Cemetery totals for the fiscal year of, from October 1 of 2022 to September 30 of 2023. So for the cemetery plots sold, we sold 43. As far as plots on contract, which means that someone has come in, put a percentage down and paid out the rest, we did 15 of those this past year. Earned plots that were sold were, there was two of them. Total burials or internments, there were 52. We also set 39 monuments. And as far as the Madeley Chapel, which we do allow citizens to use at request, there were four requests for that. Three grave digging permits were issued. And of course, we did one cemetery tour with lanterns and legends. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor and council, this item was requested by someone that we had done it last year. They wanted to know if we were going to bring it back again. So I figured I'd give Michelle a good experience since she works a lot with cemetery. We stay quite busy in the cemetery field.
Yeah, see, we just did a cleanup, too.
We were supposed to.
It's been delayed, I think, yeah.
It is being delayed due to shortage of staff, but it is scheduled to be done.
Yeah, we also had some new streets.
New streets done. And then one of the things you'll hear tonight when we go over the mowing contract, too, is hopefully the proposal is to change the vendors. And so hopefully that'll help with some of the upkeep out at the cemetery. Next item on the agenda, we've got for update on the CIP and our graduate engineer, John McKay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John McKay, graduate engineer. So I just kind of wanted to run down things. The big one, obviously, the CIP project, what we keep calling it, the large street and utility project, they are currently testing the utilities is their big thing right now. So they're going through and on a good small example, manholes for the sewage system. You want to make sure that water can't go inside the sides. So they've got to do special testing on each and every one. So all the ones that they've been installing, they're doing all that testing on that and on the water in the area they've been working. Next step after this is to get the crews out of that area, move them over to a different street, and let them start working on the concrete and then the paving behind that. So that's the big CIP project. Two more you've been hearing about.
Where are you suggesting that's being done?
That's over, for sure, they were testing Sycamore specifically today, but it's those seven streets. I don't have a good name for the area. Colloquially, we've been calling it Old Town, but it's that whole area northeast of Washington, La Salle, by Webb. The airport and fire hydrant projects y'all been hearing about, those are both in closeout stage. We're getting our final paperwork behind us. Y'all heard last week, a small change of order for the fire hydrant, or last time, for the fire hydrant project. We're getting affidavits, stuff like that, to go ahead and close out those contracts. On the upcoming, this isn't actually a CIP, but just so y'all know, we have contractor mobilized on Hidden Hills Phase 2 started today. They broke ground today on the next phase of that development. So that's starting up again. We met out there with the contractor to make sure that they understood our standards and that we are enforcing them. The upcoming, soon, we have two projects out for bid. Right now, we have a project to replace two rotors at the wastewater plant. That's bidding now. That's going to bid on Thursday. It's going to be the bid opening for it. And late today, we went ahead and decided to push. There's another one. It's a gas project that's going to take high-pressure gas out to the west side of town to provide more gas pressure over the winter and stuff like that out there by Pecan Lakes where we've seen the growth come. So that's bidding next week now at this point. Jennifer and I made that decision just right at the end of work today to go ahead and push it. There were a couple of questions. We needed an addendum is the best way to deal with it. And on the horizon, we have the East Side Water Plant. They're doing geotechnical borings right now. So we found hard ground up there on the hill. The guy got about 50 foot down and broke his drill bit. So he's starting again this Thursday and Friday. But we've got it mode. We've got him access. He's working through that. We were working through permitting, stuff like that to keep that project rolling. So I know there's not been many updates, but it's going. That's really all I have, unless y'all have any questions.
Yes, I have one.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain what you mean about the standards that we will be enforcing them?
So back in 2019, we adopted Navasota City Design Guidelines. Everyone knows about them. There hadn't been an issue with enforcement, but it's still nice to go kick rocks and remind them that we know about them. Things that we do, such as how we do our sewer services, they're a little bit different than how Bryan Call Station does it. So when you get a contractor out of Bryan Call Station, it's nice to remind them, reset, look at your plans, look at your details, and build them the way we want them. This is, we drew this up for a reason. We want this as a utility company. So it was reminding them of those kind of things. Specifically sewer services, we do six-inch. Bryan Call Station does four when you have two services up. There's arguments both sides, but everything new going into town is six-inch. Remind the guy, don't grab the four-inch pipe you're used to grabbing. Grab the six-inch pipe that's right next to it. Things like that. So that's really what it was about.
Cause delays and things like that.
Yeah. We pour a splash pad in front of our fire hydrants. Don't forget about the splash pad in front of our fire hydrants. Things, small things. Remind them what we're doing. Remind them that they're there. So.
When are they actually going to start paving in that street project?
Street project, we're still lying January.
Maybe January, okay.
So that's, I wouldn't be surprised that it slips near the end of January, depending on how wet the winter is.
And so let me go back to my questions about the Old Town.
Okay.
The amount of sewer line and water line that we're tearing up and putting back in, was that all, is that all going to be repaved? Because it appears to me that we're going further than what I saw on the map. That may not be the case, but as I'm driving in the mud over there, I'm thinking, man, this looks like a lot more work than what we had originally talked about. So.
So with short asterisks, the answer is yes. There are a couple of areas where we go past it. A lot of times specifically that happens either, so there's two instances where this has happened. One is sewer, you have to, you can't stop in the middle between manholes. You've got to go to the next one. Or it might be that when they were designing it, they went down another street and they realized that, you know, I have a ton of fall between this street and then everything's flat. So why don't we just cut a straight line through so we have good fall the whole way? So in some of those cases, they did a, it's a trench repair in that case. So it's still getting repaired. It's not being left the mud. But they're going to dig that out and lay back in either new asphalt or new concrete. The other area where it's happened is, what we're finding is, back in the 50s, when they put in water lines, they weren't the best at doing as-built drawings. So where we thought the water line was on the left-hand side of the road, it's on the right-hand side of the road. And they've got to keep digging to find it so they can tie back in. So those are the two instances where that's happening.
Okay. But those two instances that are different, we are still going to take care of those roads.
We are still repaving. We're still doing, it's called a trench repair, is the actual bid item. So, but yes, it's in there, either concrete or asphalt trench repair.
Okay.
And again, Old Town is just, it's colloquial. We found cobbles. I actually have one up on my desk, a little cobble from Kettler Street. It was kind of cool.
Really?
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Any reports from council on boards and commissions? No, I was, I forgot to bring you with me. We, I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission last meeting and the, Lupe can correct me if I'm wrong, the, was it the final plat was approved for the Candlewood Suites?
Yeah, the site, final site.
Final site plan. And then- And then, the other item was- Liminary plat for- Yeah, fifteen lots at Doe Crossing, so, thank you. I'd like to invite Kathy Wells, she's gonna tell us about Grimes County Reeds Across America.
Hello, and thank you for the invitation to come and speak to the council about Reeds Across America. I brought Reeds Across America to Grimes County two years ago, this'll be our third year, at Oakland Cemetery. We're a small county, so we only have one location, and that doesn't mean I don't send reeds out to other cemeteries, or give them to people to lay at the graves of veterans in other cemeteries. That's one of the great things, I like to kinda spread the love that's being shared with the sponsorship of these reeds. So, it's on Reeds Across America Day, it's a nationwide date, it's on October, I mean, December 16th, it's a Saturday. At eleven AM, we will have a ceremony, we have wreaths that are, a special set of wreaths that are brought in for the ceremony, and we have, I pair a child with either a veteran or someone who represents a veteran of a branch of service, and they carry these wreaths, and we have this ceremony. So, it's brief, but I like to have the ceremony, I think it really, really expresses what Reeds Across America is all about. It's at eleven AM, because that starts at the same time, all of the ceremonies across the country are held at the same time. So Arlington National Cemetery, which was the original cemetery where wreaths were taken, starts at noon, so all the central time cemeteries, the ceremony starts at eleven, ten o'clock Mountain Time, nine o'clock Pacific. There, when we signed up with Reeds Across America in 2021, we were, they only had about nineteen hundred locations throughout the country, and now we, they have over thirty-eight hundred. So, it's growing really fast and furious. Our county is, does a pretty good job, I mean, it takes a little time to get it kicked off, and get people to know about it, and get the word out there, and get people to help out. We have the assistance of, Bert's been there, Mayor Miller's been there both years, and I hope, and I think you're gonna be there this year, he sponsored a wreath for his grandfather's grave, and just come and help out, something that is really meaningful to a lot of people, and we talk about veterans, there are, any veteran's grave, you can lay a wreath at. It doesn't matter what side they were on, where they served, when they served, what conflict they served in, we're gonna honor those veterans. And there are a lot of people, veterans, that are buried out there, that maybe have no descendants. They either have no descendants, or they've moved off, and they never come back, maybe they don't even know they're there, that they have a great-great-grandfather, great-great-great-grandfather buried in Oakland Cemetery in Navasota. And that's not important to some people, to remember those people, but it is really important to a lot of us. And so, that's what's so great about Reeds Across America. So, I hope that you'll support it, I've left business cards of mine with Suzie, Ms. Hoemeyer, and so I can be reached, we have our own email address, we have a Facebook page, my phone number is on there, my name is on there. Patty helped out the first year, she did the wreath for Carl Dry, because he was there, it was not too long before he died, but he was there, but he was very ill, and so she did the Air Force wreath, seeing as how her son is in the Air Force. Do you have any questions? Can I answer any questions?
You can go to that, Grimes County Reeds Across America Facebook page.
You go to reedsacrossamerica.org, you can search the location, and there are three groups in the county that are sponsoring, that are helping to promote sponsorship of wreaths. And there was an article in the newspaper, I believe it was last week, and it had three QR codes for the three different groups, so either one of those QR codes will get you to a group where you can sponsor wreaths, or you can visit reedsacrossamerica.org and search for the location, which is Oakland Cemetery. We don't have any more cemeteries, just because of the size of the county, the wreaths are delivered to the VFW post during the week before the event, and stored there inside, and so, we've got a pretty good thing, we're getting a lot of groups involved, and I think it's a very worthwhile thing for us to have in our county.
I think it's as little as seventeen dollars, you can get a, you can sponsor a wreath, so.
Very economical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting things coming up, we've got the latest English as a Second Language, or learning English classes, tomorrow is the only registration date for the next session, so tomorrow is the registration deadline at the Navasota Center, and then there are three registration dates for the next GED, or High School Equivalency, classes, the fourteenth tomorrow, and then January 16th, and then February 13th. And there's been some posts on Facebook with more details, but the number you can call for more information is nine-three-six-four-five-eight-seventeen-fifty-six, or adultedfiveohfive, that's adulted, E-D-fiveohfive at gmail dot com, if you need more information on that. November 25th, coming up is Small Business Saturday, that's gonna be promoted through our Economic Development Corporation and City, that's the day before, or the day after Black Friday, so it's encouraging the shop local promotion. On December 2nd is the Jingle Around Town Sippin' Shop for the holidays, that will be from ten to five on the 2nd of December. Then we have our Big Home for the Holidays event coming up on the 9th, which will consist of the farmer's market kicking off the day, activities here at City Hall, throughout the day, with pictures with Santa and vendors on the outside here. Also, parade will start at six o'clock, lighted parade, lighting of the Christmas tree directly following that, I believe carols from the high school, I believe, choir, and then the showing of the movie Elf will be right after that, so be sure and stay around for that on the 9th. And yeah, okay, we already covered the wreaths, so that's good, anything else?
Mayor, so real quick, also, I wanna let council and the public, as well as any of our residents that live in Pecan Lakes, they received a letter dated November 10th. It is, it is a letter that is required by the Public Utility Commission, it is on the notice, a petition for cease and desist order, which is related to GNW Water Supply. GNW Water Supply, as you know, but the other people might not, had filed a petition against the city of Navasota that may affect water service out there, and so, kinda wanted to touch base on that, also wanted to just give some insight, that residents, they may receive a legal notice from the PUC about the water service, but the city wanted to make sure that, rest assured, that the city's committed to ensuring safe, reliable drinking water to their home, and there will not be any interruption in their service. Texas law allows the city to serve within its city limits, including within the Pecan Lakes neighborhood. Another utility is asserting the right to serve, which is GNW Water Supply, as you know, is located twenty-five miles away in Waller, Texas. The notice that they receive is one of two efforts at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, to clear up the entitlement to serve between the city and GNW. The city is working with our legal counsel to put together a press release that we will push out to those residents in Pecan Lakes, so they're aware, we have got some calls today, and some messages about this, so in case you receive any calls or anything, this is what this is pertaining to. Again, it's part of the process that they have to go through, they have to notify residents, but we wanna make sure that our residents are assured that they'll continue to receive water, and there's not gonna be an interruption in their water service.
Item five, consideration of possible action on canceling the December 25th, 2023 regular city council meeting.
Mayor and Council, I doubt you wanna show up on Christmas Day, December 25th, so we're asking for you to cancel that meeting, which is on December 25th. Again, if there's, the only meeting that we will have is, I think it's December 13th that month, and so if there's a need to be able to have a meeting sometime in that month, then we'll call a special meeting. But at this time, we're asking you to consideration and approve canceling the December 25th regular council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move to cancel December 25th, 2023 regular city council meeting?
Second. Motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Harris, to cancel the December 25th, 2023 regular council meeting. In further discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Item six, consideration of possible action on Resolution 752-23, approving a water leak adjustment policy, and if deemed necessary, authorize staff to retro the policy back to June 2020, excuse me, 2023, to be used only for the George Washington Carver School water leak.
Mayor and members of council, if you'll remember, a couple of council meetings ago, Mary Mabels got up and spoke about a water leak that occurred at the schoolhouse there. As I mentioned, currently, there is no, the city has no water leak adjustment policy, so the only provisions we can provide it to a customer that has a water leak is a payment plan. And so what you have before you is staff prepared a water leak policy, it talks about that a utility customer can request the adjustment not more than once in any calendar year. The utility customer would be required to provide documentation of the leaks and repairs of their system, to fix the necessary leaks. Water leak adjustment policies are not unusual, many cities have these, and what happens is, a resident, they don't notice their leak until two months later, so for us, you're just now fixing, get your bill for the usage that you have in October, so we run about two months behind, so you use, and then we read, and then you don't get billed to the following month. And so, there's a time when a resident will not know that they have a leak until they get that bill. And so, even though we are in the process of trying to find a way to do some documentation, and let people understand how to use the online process where you can set up alerts, this is just another tool that, hey, if they have a leak, they can find a way to be able to come to us and show that they had a leak, they had it repaired, and get a small discount on that leak, as long as it's repaired. One of the other pieces talked about in the policy is, if you, say for instance, you have a resident like myself, I have irrigation leak, which is, it happens, and I don't need to hire a plumber to come fix it, I can go to the store, get the parts myself and fix it myself, it's a lot cheaper. So on those type things, we ask for a resident to document, hey, get us a photo of what was broke, give us some information, you might even had a part on hand, just give us something that shows us, you fixed the leak, because until you fix the leak, you can't get the adjustment. Because the idea is, we wanna make sure that they, the leak has been fixed. And again, the other part of this action item is, if you choose, and I'm, so in your motion, I would ask if you're going to approve the policy, and if you decide you wanna add this to it, be sure to add that into your motion, is if you want to retro this back to the George Washington Carver School from the June to August timeframe, when that leak was, we can apply that to this case only, since it did not apply during that, but again, that is at council's discretion, but ask for that to be included in the motion, if so choose. And I'll answer any questions that I can.
What will happen if, just that this little old lady comes up and says she had a water leak six months ago, and her water bill was expensive?
So it was several months ago, more than likely, she's already paid that bill.
Right.
And so, a credit would be given back onto their account, I think that's what-
I think it's three months back, but-
Yeah, three months back, so yeah, you can't, you can't just say, okay, I had a water last year, and come back for it, you gotta only go back three months, is what the policy states, unless council wants us to move it back further. Again, council, you're the policymakers, and so staff has put together a draft of what we're proposing, you can feel free to make any adjustments you want to the policy, it was just, we reached out to other municipalities and saw what they were doing, and kinda drafted up something interior to her, directly for Navasota. But hopefully she would've fixed her leak on that. Again, the idea is, promote for them to try to get the leak fixed.
I'd like for this not to be necessary. Water is one of our scarce resources, and becoming scarcer, and it behooves us to stop the leak and not waste the water that would be coming out of these leaks, rather than worrying about paying for it. I think, or I thought, that when we had that deal there a couple of years ago, with, got all the new meters, that we were supposed to have the capability to be able to see in the office up there, that when anybody's water usage was beyond normal, and I thought there was a system set up that they could register to have their account flagged to watch for that. And I'm wondering if we can bring that back or something, so that we have the capability, if we have the capability to use that, to notify the people, so that it didn't get out of hand. Like you said, we're dealing with the two-month lag, a lot of water can go through the thing, if you have a leakage in an irrigation system or something, where you might not be able to determine that you have a leak.
And we, and staff, we've met, and we are putting processes in place to be able to address catching those a lot quicker, similar to what you were talking about, and in addition to that, it is very cumbersome for somebody that's not technologically savvy, to be able to go into our website, to sign in to where you pay online your account, and go to settings, and set up an alert that says, it actually, when you go into there, it shows on your gas and water, it shows what your average daily usage is, and kinda gives you an idea of, hey, here's what you need to set your alert to, and it will send you an email. So if your average daily usage is two-hundred gallons, but that's, you set it up during the winter, okay, well, summer, you might be getting alerts whenever your, when your irrigation's going off all the time. So, a resident's gotta know how to, be technologically savvy, go in there and make those changes when they need to, and make the adjustments. We are starting to look at and putting processes in place to be able to catch those, like what you're talking about, on every morning, try to run a report to catch those. This is just another safeguard to help, ideally, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have too many of these, but unfortunately, there might be some that come in. Again, even with the new technology moving to the radio reads, where it's actually automatically read immediate, the other communities have water leak adjustments, just to be able to have a safeguard, so that you can help residents financially when these come about. So if it's not approved, so anybody, we will continue doing payment arrangements with our residents for these type of adjustments that need to be made, but it's not, we're not gonna adjust their pay down, we're just gonna stretch it out, they'll have to pay their current bill, plus a portion of that old bill that was out there. They'll have to pay their current bill, plus a portion of that old bill that was out there.
I don't remember when I set mine up, but in the specific case that's mentioned here, potentially the, the customer has a, has multiple accounts. So can you set it up per account? Or do you know?
I don't think we've done that. I, I, I'm sure you can, well, so probably not, because it's, your accounts are tied to an email address, unless you have each account tied to a different email address. That, that's, that would be the only way, which could be an option. So if you have a Gmail, set up the Gmail account for each locate. So if you're, if you're, if you own a lot of rental homes, for instance, and you want to be able to keep up with that, you set up an email address based on the address, and then do it like that. And that way, when you get an email to that, that email address, you know it's related to that.
Right.
That location. That's a workaround, and I know it's, it's cumbersome, but we don't have a lot of landlords that have a lot of property in town, just a handful property.
Okay. And looking at the request for water bill revision, the actual form that's included, in the second paragraph on that page, it says, "A latent defect in the water line at said premises." Just wondering about water line, because what if it's not, what if it's a toilet or whatever? Do I? Mayor Bill?
It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't say anything about the water line.
Yeah, the second paragraph, the very first sentence in the second.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The water line would be the continuum of the, the water passage type.
Yeah, I think it's.
Rather than a pipe.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the way we interpret it's, it's the system.
We could add some language, something like water line and associated facilities, or something like that, which would cover any sort of connections or.
And associated systems?
About, associated facilities, maybe like that phrase. That would cover those other possibilities that you're talking about, Councilmember.
Okay. And then in the last sentence in that same, same paragraph, it says, "No additional water appliances have been placed." I don't know what a water appliance is.
Like a washing machine?
Is it like appliance that uses water?
So, so.
I mean. Just never heard of water appliances.
Yeah, so, so what we're, what we're trying to say is, the reason it didn't go up was because you, you've added additional.
Appliances that use water.
Could be, it could be a swimming pool. So, hey, you, you need, that's the other thing. We're not, we're not.
Yeah, I get what it is, it's just, I've never heard anything be called a water appliance, and so just curious what that means.
And I, so I've, I've kind of went through all the different type scenarios you would have through this, and I've had people come to me with, in another municipality that said, hey, I had a water leak. I'm like, okay, well, I need for you to show me where you fixed it, and they're like, well, I didn't, because, and it turns out, they didn't, it had nothing to do but with them fixing it. Turned out that they wanted to refill their pool. And so, we were not addressing anything with pools, where you get one time, you know, a year, filling your pool or anything like that. These are specifically related to leaks, not swimming pools, not.
I follow you, but as a reader of words, it says water appliances, and I'm not sure what that is. An appliance that uses water potentially. And then the, the last thing that I would say about this, I would like this to be notarized.
So.
We, we have some language that, we, we're going to finalize that application for the credit, and put a, a sworn statement, and require them to swear to it and get it notarized. So we, we have that language that we're, we have, we just haven't added it to that form, but we do have the language.
You just might want to do some kind of asterisk with a definition maybe of the water appliance.
Okay.
Something, you know, that just makes it easier to understand, because I'm, I'm with you.
Okay. So we'll, we'll tidy up on the, the, the form here, but I, I still don't think the form changes, it just provides a little bit of validity to what they're asking for, but we definitely can, to work on that. Any other questions?
And so, if, if somebody is, if somebody applies, the goal is, you're going to go back and see what an average use of water is for that same time period.
Yes, sir.
So that you get a, so there, there's still a bill that has to be paid.
There, yeah, yeah, they're still going to have to pay a bill, it's just not going to be as much. Yes, sir. They're not going to, they're not going to get it free, they're not, yeah.
And so in the case, in this situation with Carver, you're asking basically the same thing that we would.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm asking, if council so chooses.
Sure.
To go back and apply this policy that you're approving tonight, specifically only for them, they are nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization, apply that to as though it was in place back then, and for them to utilize.
Right, so it's not saying you don't get a bill, it's just we're going to adjust it to.
Correct, and, and when I met with, with them about this, explained to them that you're still going to have to pay something. They did, they paid, I think they paid $300 on the $1,500 bill, but explained to them, you're still going to have to pay, we've not, until we brought this forward, we have not charged any late fees, or shut off fees, or anything like that, or late charges, anything like that. So, they are aware they're going to have to pay something, it's not going to be waived completely.
And they've had it repaired, I mean, I guess.
So, again, we've, we've asked them, they said it was repaired, but they're, again, they'll have to go through the same process here, provide us the documentation where they, they've had it repaired.
Their bill doesn't continue to remain high.
So, according to when, when I met with them last, I looked, and there was no usage up through that date. Now, I don't know what it's been since I met with them, but, yeah, I, I can't answer that question on, but I know up through the specific day, there's been no usage. Since notifying of the leak, I think it was up through middle of October, first part of October, whenever we, whenever they came and talked before, there's been no usage.
Because again, I don't, I, I think it was just a, a running toilet is what it was.
So that's what they told us, but again, they're going to have to provide that documentation where they, because they said they came and had someone to look at it, I think the fourth plumber came and fixed it, so they're going to have to provide that same documentation that our policy requires in order to get that, that adjustment.
Do we give them a, for anybody that would apply for this, is there a time limit that they initially instigate, and, or tell us that, hey, this is, I'm filing for this, but the paperwork has to be finished within 15 days or something?
Yeah, so I think it states, and I have to look, I just saw that, within 90-day, no. Well, so it says, the period may not exceed three or consecutive months, so they can only go back the, the three, the three months there, so they've got about a month to let us know, if, if they, if they are notified through their utility bill.
So the time would run out, basically, because of the third, the three consecutive months passing?
Again, we will, you know, publish this out, push it out. The idea would be to put this in a newsletter that goes out with their utility bill about the new policy, have residents be able to go to our website to look up what that policy is. Would not probably suggest, we might be able to put it in an insert, because it's two pages, front and back, we'll see what we can do to be able to cut down on the insert. Definitely going to try to communicate this to all of our water customers about this new policy.
Is three months a long time for somebody to get documentation for that? I just don't want this hanging out, out there as they apply it, and we're waiting and waiting.
If, if they're, if they're relying strictly on their utility bill, it's, it's only one month, because two months, if it started, they didn't find out, they won't, and they not found out about it till two months into it, so.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, so from the time that they actually contact the city and say, hey, I want to request a revision, and we say, you've got to give us your paperwork, all your documentation on it being fixed, blah, 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 how long do we give them to do that?
I mean, up until total of, what, 90 days? Complete.
So it could go on for three more months?
No, no, so it can only go on for three months, because, because if they, they get their bill, and they find out, hey, I've got a, I've got a leak, they're, they're, they're 61 days into the 90 days for the three months, so they have a, a month to fix it. Hey, I need to get with the city, need to pay, or I need to, hey, I need to file for this. I mean, it's not like we're not going to, hey, get your paperwork into us as, as soon as possible.
So the basis, the basis is the date of the leak?
Correct, yeah, so.
Starts with the 90 days.
So I don't want your staff having to worry with all of, you know, oh my gosh, we need to get this information in, I need to call them, tell them, hey, you hadn't gotten it.
So they don't get the adjustment until all the paperwork's here.
Okay.
So until they get, so that, until, yeah, so until they, they, they get the adjustment, they're still, they still owe the bill. I mean, that's the other part is, they'll need to keep making a payment on, on a bill.
Would it be kind of simple if, if they filed, to say you have 10 to 15 days to get the paperwork in, and then after that?
Definitely, we could do that, I, I just, we didn't want to, I didn't want to put something in there that hamstrung people, because, I mean, you think about it, when, when the freeze happened, and everybody had water leaks, trying to get a plumber out, or somebody come out and fix it, it's not the easiest to do that quick, and it was mainly their irrigation. Me, I didn't care, I wasn't going to use my irrigation anyway, so I just shut my irrigation off, even though it busted, shut it off, I waited till the summer to fix it. So, I mean, so those are, we don't want to hamstring our residents into it, we want to provide a, a resource to fix.
I don't think anybody's saying that, I think, I think we don't want to hamstring our staff from having to deal with.
So staff's not going to make, I mean, you still owe the bill, and so that's going to speed up the process, because you're still.
As long as you think that this policy will not cause any problems with staff and having to keep up with it, great.
I mean, you, you want, you still owe your bill, until you bring that policy in, it's been approved, or that, it's been approved, you provide all the documentation. Until then, you're still going to pay, you'll have, still have to pay the bill, you're still going to have to, if you have any late fees, because I'm not going to pay this bill, because I had a leak, well, then you need to fix the leak, provide all the documentation, so that it's not, staff's still going to do their process, it is the resident's going to have, is under the, the gun to get the documentation to us.
So if I'm understanding you right, you're saying that if someone have a water leakage, and their bill is high, they still have to pay the bill, but they can file a paper, and then the city will reimburse?
So, we will look at, either you get a credit or reimbursed, depends on, I mean, if, if you, if you had a $3,000 bill and you pay a $3,000, you will probably never, I mean, your bill is probably not $3,000 in a couple of years of your, on your water portion. So, yeah, at that point, we would do a refund, but, I mean, a certain amount, we're not going to, we just would credit your account, just credit your account for that, and, and so, but you still have to pay your, you're still going to have to pay the bill. So for instance, for the George Washington Carver issue, we're not charging any late fees, and so those are, those are, those are things that the CFO and myself can say, utility billing manager, you know, here's a specific case, we look at it on a case-by-case basis, we don't want to charge them, I mean, they had a $4,000, $5,000 bill, they, they're never paid $4,000, $4,000, $5,000 bill, we're not going to expect for them, and so on that, hey, let's put them on a payment plan, the payment plan until they bring in their documentation, so that payment plan, they still have to pay a portion of their total bill. So take the $5,000, divide it by, if it's a 12-month, I don't know, do we have 12 months?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so if we go 12 months, you divide that out, so you're going to have to pay 1/12 of that, that month, plus your current bill, whatever your current bill is, and you don't get any late fees, but you, you'll, you'll, you'll have to get everything into us really quick, so that you're, next month, you don't have to pay that 1/12 again. So, that's a way, so you're still paying it, so that they're, they're not going to have to pay as much, but they're still going to have to pay something based on the, the leak adjustment.
And that 90 days starts the day that that bill went out?
So.
That the bill was due?
So we can look at. Hey, I don't have that. And I get my bill.
Right, so, so we will.
When does that 90 days start?
Yeah, so the 90 days will.
See my bill, or the day that?
The day that the leak was.
Yeah, and so we're going to be able to tell generally from the usage when that leak occurred. So for instance, I'll, I'll use the George Washington Carver, I can tell you that it started on June 23rd, and I can tell you about the hour it started, because.
So by the time I get my bill, we're 60 days in?
Yes, ma'am.
So they have 30 days?
Correct. Now, that's it now, unless, unless you're setting up a, unless you set up the, or we've caught it before then.
Yeah.
Then it might be more, more time.
Okay.
That's worst case.
Yeah, yeah, that's worst case. Worst case is, is the 60 days has gone by. But hopefully, the, the process we've put in place with staff now, it not, we're not going to get to those 60 days, we're going to identify pretty soon.
And then I guess the concern was that, when we, when everything froze, and we were leaking water all over the city, that would have ended up being, I would guess, several hundred customers with leaks.
That was, that would be correct. I, I wasn't, I don't remember. I wasn't here for that, but, but I can imagine.
It was quite chaotic.
Yeah, but I, I, I wasn't, I mean, in fact, you know, all of Texas did that, so, I mean, yeah, we had people going around, looking at, at what, where the leaks were happening, because we were losing pressure, and then you have to go on the bull notice, yeah, so.
And those were, those were very, all very visible.
Oh, well, yeah, and we, we ended up cutting people's water, just so that the leaks would stop, because people didn't know they had leaks, so we were just, we were just having to cut water everywhere. It was chaos. But I'm just saying that you, you have the possibility of having 300 of those come in at the same time, with a mass freeze like that.
Got it, and that's, we'll, we'll manage. Again, this was something that resident, we think that is important for a resident to have an option for.
I think it's a great policy. I, I agree.
And we'll manage through it, I mean, it's just, that's part of what we need to be doing.
The language needs to change. Out.
And the George Carver issue, if you wanted to, if you're planning on making a motion.
And put it here? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve resolution number 752-23, approving a water leak adjustment policy, with the changed language in section one, first paragraph, striking customer, adding in or associated facilities after water line, and then in 1d, changing from water appliances to appliances that use water. And then I would also move to authorize staff to retro the policy back to June 2023, to be used for the George Carver School water leak.
Second. Motion by Ms. Peterson, second by Mr. Gessner, to approve resolution 752-23, as stated by Councilmember Peterson, with changes. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item carried. Item seven, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public. Item seven, conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony. On an order to repair or demolish the structure located at two zero two Holland Street, Navasota, Texas seven seven eight six eight. Consideration and possible action at that time to order, repair or demolish structure at two oh two Holland Street. Uh, we'll open the hearing at seven eleven.
Uh, Mister Mayor of City Council, uh, this next item is a bit bittersweet, we really enjoy and, uh, have a lot of pride in our downtown, and so. Uh, anytime we're bringing any building for, uh, consideration of repair or demolish, it's tough. This one's a little bit tougher, just because it is in our downtown and it's a great historic building. Um, so just a little bit of background, two oh two Holland Street, uh, staff, uh, was notified that there was a possible roof collapse, and. Uh, so let me back up a little bit, Eric Kovarubias, he should have been here tonight, but he was feeling under the weather, so he did a lot of this legwork, and he did a good job putting all the information together. Um, but anyway, so we were notified that the roof had collapsed, uh, we've been in contact with the property owner. Um, we've been working a lot with Eric Tennyson, he's he's the son of, uh, of the original property owner, and, uh, so we've been working very close with them. Um, anytime we have these, uh, these cases, you know, we try to document as much as possible what is visible. Um, so we have some good photos in the staff report, and, you know, you can just walk by the building and see that there is some significant damage. Um, so since then, we've we've heard that, uh, Neil Martinson's involved, he's maybe looking at purchasing the property, and so. Uh, and I'll I'll invite both of them, if they wanna come up and say any, any, uh, any additional information they may have. Uh, the staff report, I think it details out pretty well what the issues are, uh, and the and the visuals, of course, they they help quite a bit. So, uh, you know, depending on the information that is shared tonight, council will have a few options. Uh, either to order the building, repair or demolish the next amount of time, or maybe even grant some additional time. So again, I'll I'll open it to Neil or Eric, if they have any other information.
The minutes should reflect the Councilmember Peterson is abstaining from this matter, and she has filed the appropriate paperwork. To, um, not participate in this matter, and so she has conflict of interest in this issue.
Good evening, my name is Eric Tennyson, uh, I am speaking for my parents, uh, I do have power of attorney. Uh, so as of right now, I was asked to bring a plan and schedule, uh, to the council. We we did go under contract this past Friday, and we do have a signed contract with Neil Martinson. Uh, so the plan at this point is to do a very quick close, uh, we have a close on the twenty-fourth, so we're gonna press hard to get there. So on my side, that's my plan, that's my schedule, um, and for Neil, I know he'll probably go into more detail on his side. But that's really it for me. Any questions?
You said the twenty-fourth, is that this month?
That's this month, November twenty-fourth. Yes, sir.
How y'all doing today? Hey, appreciate your time, and I am one hundred percent understand why we're here talking about this, right? So, um, just kinda back up, so I've known Junior for a little while, and that's how, um, we're we're both car guys, okay? So whenever I see something like this old building, I immediately fall in love, because for me, I, uh, I'm an old car guy. So I'm that guy that can pull something out of a field and see the end game, right? I love it, right? And I see the vision. I've got two classic cars myself, that's why Junior and I got got, uh, we connect so well together, right? Because if you ever seen, that's a forty-six Chevy pickup, in case you're curious, what he drives all the time, so, um. So my plan on this is, whenever I first talked to him, he made it very clear about what was going on here, as far as, you know, the building in being in tough repair. I actually stopped by one day to say, hey, how's it going? And then next thing you know, forty-eight hours, I'm on a contract, literally, that's that's where we're at, so. Um, I I, you know, again, I go back to understand why we're here, as far as the building goes down, so as soon as we kinda get to this point. Um, I get pretty obsessed with projects, right? So whenever we had, just from the time that we have contact. Um, I've been very blessed with where I am, especially with my business and where I am, to have really good contacts, so my first contact was. A buddy of mine named Colton Marriott, which is Marriott Homes at College Station, him and his family, and I said, hey, I need a good structural engineer. He told me about, uh, Thomas Gessner, right? And so Mister Gessner is Gessner Engineering, which is in Bryan. Um, actually had a conversation with him today about kinda plans, luckily, I found the right guy. Um, he obviously is a born and raised here in Navasota, so I said, hey, do you know the place? And he said, well, I've ridden, ridden my bike by this place ever since I was a kid. So he has a pretty good idea, um, but he's into old buildings, and so my main thing is, I just want, long game, what I'm trying to figure out, it's a couple of different things. I, um, I am not a specialist when it comes to restoring old buildings, it's not my thing, but I, uh, I love the project. And in goal, what I'm trying to do is, I would love to have a State Farm office in there, have more retail space for the community. I love the opportunity to try to beautify downtown, it's a big deal, I think, you guys are doing a great job, honestly, it's it's amazing, and so. That I would love to have a small part in that, right, to try to help out with this, okay? So I actually have an appointment with him, uh, Thursday, to walk the property. Um, something's gonna happen in the next sixty days, right? So I know, you know, I looked at the, um, I looked at the pictures that were taken. Um, I don't, I I made, you know, as far as life, I I don't, I don't, I try not to make assumptions in life, right? So I know it doesn't look good, I'm well aware, I know why we're here, right, so this is not in good shape. But my goal is to try to, try to get this thing back on its feet to re- restore the project, that's my thing, so. Uh, after his advice, I even met with a contractor this afternoon, at one o'clock, we walked the property, same guy that built Rayland Ride Barber Shop. And all the other downtown, for him to kinda get his thoughts on the property, on what he feels like would take to kinda get, and he just wasn't concerned, these old buildings are made really well. They're double bricked on each side, it does have structural cracks, but these things, it's actually just more facial, anyways. They have the, uh, options to get, to to figure out exactly what needs to be done to make it happen, the whole building does need a new roof. But that's why I'm bringing Mister Gessner to try to get us where we need to be to make that happen, so I guess what I'm trying to say, in the next ninety days. Uh, we're gonna know whether this can be repaired, or if it needs to be torn down, that's kinda where I'm at. So I'm just requesting a little bit more time, so I can get a little bit more time, just evaluate the situation, try to save a Navasota, uh, you know, landmark. That we've had for a long time, so as far as it goes, I'm not a big believer in just new, obviously, I'm a car guy, so I'm not like, just rip it down, and then we'll just buy something new. That's not the way I roll, so I would love to give this old girl new life, and she could be a really cool addition to downtown, is where I'm at, so. Um, that's kinda my plan, on where I'm at, I'm really, I've been, uh, Eric's been really great, you know what I mean, as far as working with me, trying to get to this point. But what I do need is time, right? And so I'm not, two two things, I'm not looking to just sit on this as an investment. That possibly another guy's gonna come down the line to try to offer me, that's not where we're at, right? I'm not, I'm also not looking to just leave it there, because I realize, and when I take this over, it's a liability, immediately as I took it over, I'm well aware of this, right? So my thing is, is that in the next ninety days, that's a very gracious number, it's more like the next thirty, sixty days. I'm gonna be having a very high plan, whether we need a temporary structure, everything to make sure that it is safe, that there's no issues. Second thing, what it's gonna take to go ahead and get a roof on this thing, to get it dried in, so that way, at that point, then we can have plans to go ahead and build out the space. And that way, we can kinda move forward with our plans and what we're at, but again, very difficult to do that in thirty days, whether we need to restore demo in that time period. So I just need a little bit more time to try to get that, so I can try to get to you guys on, on what, you know, for everything, so.
Your ultimate hope is to. Uh, bring the building back and not tear it down, correct?
Yeah, I mean, in the off chance, if we go in there, I mean, the the beautiful thing about this thing is that it's concrete floor throughout, right? Which is, you know, like as old buildings, they have concrete floors throughout, they're very thick, very solid, you know, everything is good shape, so I'm really hoping we can bring it back. That that's the goal, right? God forbid, we had to take it, take it down, you know, we would salvage as much material as we could. So if we did build something, you know, back, we would actually use the material if we had to, to use, to do the same thing. But that's not the goal, man, the goal is to restore this as we can, you know, to kinda get it going. You know, when I look at things, I know the pictures, uh, you know, it's got some pretty, uh, it's got one wall on the left-hand side, that's kinda, kinda kicked out a little bit. And then there's this crack right above the windows, and I look at that as, well, that's probably not great, a contractor looks at that completely different, well, that's really not the big deal. We just gotta do X, Y, and Z to get this fixed, to get it, it just takes time and money, is all it takes, and a little bit of love, and a little bit of luck, and then we'll get there. Um, I just don't want you to think I'm naive to the point of going, we're gonna do it, I I have very good contacts to make sure that we see this thing through. To make sure that it gets done correctly, safely for the city, but also make sure it looks right, and so we're in good shape, so.
Well, I know you wouldn't sign a contract to purchase it if you didn't do your homework, so.
Yes, sir, so I just need a little bit more time is all I need, um, and again, I, you know, I appreciate what you guys do, I'm well aware of why we're here. You don't mean the whole nine yards, or why we're having this meeting, but I just want you to know that I'm I'm very passionate about trying to make sure you get this thing to the next level, is where we're at, so.
Well, we can simply just not take action, correct?
You you could do that, um, it it may be good just to, and not disbelieving what the gentleman is saying, but you may wanna put a, uh. Say, hey, bring us a report, uh, back within sixty days, ninety days of, uh, your your action. We will bring us back what you're gonna do, because the way the law is worded, is if the the default is, uh, it has to be repaired. Or demolished within thirty days, if you're, if you're gonna allow, um, the owner between thirty and ninety days. That you have to set the commencement date of the work, and you have to set the completion date of the work to repair or demolish it. And if you're going to allow more than ninety days for the repair work, let's say it comes back, it can be done, it can be salvaged. Uh, I would suspect the repairs are gonna take more than ninety days.
Correct.
Then then the owner would need to bring back to the council a very detailed plan about how that's going to work. And then the owner would also have to provide periodic progress reports to the council about the, uh, the status of the repairs as they're being done. You could, you could delay tonight and say, bring us, um, bring us back a, uh, a proposal. Let us know where you're at in sixty days, ninety days, and then you could use this hearing tonight. As, let's say, uh, let's say it can't be repaired, then you could, uh, use this hearing tonight to make the decision. Sixty, ninety days from now, we're gonna order it demolished, based on the evidence, based on the report that, uh, staff has put together, and based on what you've heard tonight.
Right.
Um, so you could delay it, but I would suggest, uh, if you're gonna do that, to, uh, give a time certain to the gentleman. So that there's a deadline, if you just comply with.
But he's not even the owner, so the, it would have to be given to Tennyson, right?
Correct, at this point, it would be, that's right, when, now, what what I understand is on the twenty-fourth, he will be there.
Right, well, so.
You're gonna have to redo notice and all that, is what, where you're going, I believe, councilman, yeah.
So my other question is, let's say that we, you know, leave here tonight, and the whole thing collapses and is on the ground. You're still gonna go close with this guy on the twenty-fourth?
Hundred percent.
Okay.
Because here's the deal, is because, uh, you know, I bought it, if I'm being frank, I bought it for the location, location's money, I mean, it's great, I mean, I love where it's at. I mean, I'd love to fix it where it is, uh, but if we have to redo it, so it resembles what it is, then we'll do that too, you know, as far as it goes. I mean, I still in games to have office space and everything down, down there, so.
It's really none of my business at all, but I, you've got the, you have the cash to make this happen either way, you're you're good to go. Uh, we we sit through a lot of these with less structure, uh, that, oh, we're gonna fix it, we're gonna fix it, and then, you know, that that isn't a lot at all.
If you've met my wife, you understand that we need to get this done immediately, so she's kinda on my ass to get moving, and so, uh, you know, for her, she, you know, her thought process. You know, when we take over, which is mine too, when we take over, it's immediately a liability, I mean, I I don't know how to say that, you know, so. I need to make sure that this thing is shored up, make sure we don't have any problems, and make sure, and but then also ultimately take the advice to have a decision. Can it be fixed, or we need to tear it down, right? And so if that's the case, we just go down that path, to kinda roll, roll that direction.
Mayor Council, also, so one of the concerns, uh, that it it, we put, we we put the the barrels out there, we did, we did talk to the property owner. Uh, that is, uh, to the east, um, uh, of the hair salon lady, she allowed us to put those barrels there. She appreciated us having a conversation with her, to let her know about, um, the building and about the the collapse of the roof. And our concerns about that wall, uh, so one of the things I wanna thank you, if we're gonna wait thirty, sixty, ninety days, we're getting into the winter time. Uh, possible high winds, any more, uh, type weather that we might have, um. Barrels, I don't think, in putting tape, the tape's not gonna continue, in fact, it's already been blown down due to the weather, no one took it down. We had those winds that came through, the 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 yellow tape went away, uh, we need to figure out a way to secure at least that side of it. I I'm not so much worried about the other side, but it is a public walkway, so I think we need to have some some conversation, if you're going to extend this out ninety days. That we somehow type secure, uh, the building, whether it's chain link fence or something, I think we did that for, um, the house over on Washington. I think, didn't they have a chain link fence around?
Yeah, the contractor that was gonna demolish, she ended up putting a temporary fence around it, so that that would be something that would obviously block the sidewalk and the eastern wall on, in this situation.
So so just, just a thought on it.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because that, it really looks like it could fall at any moment.
You know, and and that's the thing, I'm just saying, I know it looks bad, but again, I'm, again, I'm a classic car guy, it can't scare me, right? So my thing is that I've seen it all, I know it looks bad.
Insurance guy.
Yes, sir, so, so but I'm just saying, I know it looks bad, is what I'm trying to say, and I'm, and trust me, I'm aware, but I think a lot of it may be a little bit superficial as well. So I don't think structurally, it's it's necessarily gonna, you know, fall on some kid, you know, I I don't, but I'm saying, I've got a guy coming Thursday. I just wanna verify, make sure we are all on the same page, to make sure we're in good shape, it's got really good bones, I mean, it it needs love, but it it's got good bones, so we just need to make sure, so.
Just have to look out for public safety, that's.
One hundred, and I I think the chain link fence is actually a really smart idea, I really do, because I think, you know, at the end game, you you kinda block all that, it just gives, it gives a little bit more, you know.
Mayor and Council, I'm gonna step in here, I know I'm not invited to, but that corner by Farquhar and Holland, if you do chain link over on that east side. I request that corner gets fenced off as well.
Okay.
So that that is actually a pretty concerning one there.
Okay.
So Neil, are you talking?
He's an engineer.
Yeah, he looks smart, so I'm gonna go with him, so absolutely, so.
So Neil, now, are you talking about, you want ninety days just to figure out what you're gonna do, or you?
So ninety days is exactly, I mean, we can, timeline is up to you guys, right? But it wouldn't, but I need a little time to have the right experts to figure out what we're gonna do, regardless, that thing needs to be cleaned out. Cuz it's been, you know what I mean, it's got a lot of stuff in there, and so it's gotta be cleaned out, and then we gotta figure out a plan of action moving forward, so, I mean.
Okay, if we go with this tonight, are you willing to secure the location?
What, with the chain link fence? Yeah, sure, that's easy, that's not a problem at all.
Is it safe to even go in?
I was in there today, so.
So I, I mean, I call, I called Eric, I called Eric, I called Eric last week and say, hey, your your dad left the the door up, um, to it. And I don't know if he's there, in there or not, I mean, I I've been worried about his dad going in and out of there every day, and so. Um, the last thing I want is is to have our fire department have to go over there and rescue somebody, so.
So it's, it's, yeah, go ahead.
No, I I was just gonna say, there is one section where you've seen the roof cave in, uh, so we are not going in that section at all for safety reasons. For the other section, uh, if you're facing the building on the left-hand side, we are still going in that section, cuz the roof has not collapsed. And it looks to be secure, um, but yes, we're staying out of the area that doesn't look safe.
Oh, is, are the utilities off? I don't think.
The utilities are not off yet, but that is on my list, to have them shut off.
So it's got gas, natural gas potentially into the building right now?
Just water, yes.
Just water, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, gas would be, and electric, better looking, does it have electric too?
It does, for now. But I'm gonna cut that off.
So any, any, anything that we agree to tonight would be really focused on Tennyson and not Neil, right? That's.
He's the current property owner.
Yeah, okay.
That's right, so if 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 there is a need to go back and notify the new property owner, then that will start the process over again. But, uh, he would still be having in the interim the opportunity to consult with the experts and his consultants and the engineers and that sort of sort of thing. So I would imagine if you, it wouldn't slow down the timeframe, is is what I'm saying. Because you could, we could still notify him, if there was a need for something to occur, it could still happen within a, um, proper amount of time. Does that answer your question, councilman?
Yes, sir.
So on the twenty-fourth, you will, uh, I guess I'm talking to Neil, uh, on the twenty-fourth, if you close. You will notify the city manager that you're the property owner.
Yeah, I just need to know the process and what you guys need, right? So my thing is, I'm I'm, just know day one, what we're trying to do, we're trying to get the building cleaned out. Trying to make sure it's secure, and try to get it dried in, that is, that is like number one goal on the docket, right, to try to get it done. So I need to make sure that I can secure it up, clean it out, and it's dried in, and then that way, we can really have a plan on building it out on the inside and kinda get moving. On building offices and everything, now, it's gonna be a longer process, obviously, you know what I mean, trying to get done, but I think just to make sure it's secure for safety. get it cleaned, get it cleaned out and make sure it's in good shape is, is a big one, so. Yes, sir.
Mayor and council, um, one, one thing I might, you know, council member Holtz has raised an issue. We, if you decide to delay this, um, might I suggest that you direct staff to notify the new pro- property owner at the appropriate time, so that the court, the, the timing, if there's action that needs to be taken, can be coordinated, so that we're not another sixty days past the timeframe that this, this particular notification would have been effective, if you delayed it. You see what I'm saying, like, if, we would need some time to notify the new property owner to make sure that we are still moving at an expedient, uh, uh, fashion. So we could figure out those dates, depending on what deadline you give, uh, the, the potential new property owner to bring back this information, we can time it so that it syncs up with what he is supposed to provide to the council for consideration in terms of a plan and that sort of thing. I hope I'm making myself clear, but, uh, what, what I would suggest is that you direct staff to coordinate new notifications to go up to the new property owner, so that the timing, um, is synced up with any potential action that needs to occur, in the future. In terms of possible repair demolition.
Yeah, so I'm following along with you, but, but the action for this specific agenda item is to approve or deny? If we, I guess we deny the order? We're gonna say, go back for an assessment, uh, and put up fencing around the building within fifteen days?
Well, you've got it, you have an active notification to the current property owner. Let's say if this goes south, it doesn't close for some reason. What I would suggest you do is not take action on this, and then just approve, uh, delaying action, let's see if it closes. If it does close, then we can go ahead and, um, issue notification to the new property owner and coordinate that timing to be synced up, as I mentioned. If it doesn't close, then you still have the active, uh, notification that could be brought back. Let's say it turns out that this gentleman doesn't want to purchase the property, I don't think that's gonna happen, but it's, let's say it does, then you still have an active notification, you could bring it back at any time to take action on the, the order for demolition or repair with the current property owner, if it doesn't close. But if it does, then we'd do a whole different notification process to the new owner.
But if there was to be a, a recommendation, or that we agree that a, some sort of protection go around the building now or within fifteen days, that would be directed towards Mr. Tennyson, however he does it, if he has the new buyer put it up, like, we don't, that doesn't matter.
I agree with that, yes.
The safety of the, the people that could be around the building just looking at it, and because it is such a, um, great location for folks to go take photographs, uh, we certainly want to protect, protect our citizens or whoever.
I get it, you don't, you don't have to, no, I get it.
You, you could include in the motion, and the property must be secured by a chain link fence within so many days, and then it's up to them to figure out who's gonna do that and pay, pay for that.
That's why I wanna make sure I'm clear, like, we're not gonna be able to go front to back on this thing, you know, open up and done, you know, in the next ninety days. I mean, I just, but what I'm trying to do is, I'm just trying to make sure to get this thing secured, dried in, cleaned out, so that way we have a plan of action move forward, and that way we can really make it beautiful, you know, 'cause it's gonna, it needs literally everything. I mean, it's gonna need plumbing, electrical, the whole nine yards going and through the whole thing. So it's definitely not gonna be a quick process, but I promise you it will look beautiful when it's done, to try to get it done, so, yeah, finished.
And because of the issue of it being not considered safe at this point, is there any need to require that there be some sort of liability insurance on it?
Well, I, I think any liability is gonna be the property owner's, uh, the...
I've already got that set up.
You know, for the city.
I think I'd have to say it, but...
Unfortunately, it's not through me, but I, it's pretty tough shapes.
That is a problem, and, and, you know, you've got a purchaser that's aware of that as well. So any, any liability, if there's a collapse, it's not gonna be the city's fault, it's not gonna be on the city's, uh, it's not gonna be the city's responsibility, even though there's this process that's come before the city, it's still gonna be upon the property owner to make sure that the property is safe and secured, and anything that happens, um, as a result of it not being secure or safe, it's gonna be on the property owner.
On the property owner, and so we, we know that Mr. Martinson is, uh, is going to, is lining it up. I assume that the current owner also has it lined up. Insurance?
I'm working on that too.
So that's, that means that at this point it's not insured?
That's correct.
Yeah, so I think we need, we gotta do something, uh, to help protect the folks that are, that could be harmed.
And just as a point, I don't, I'd, I'd like to see us not do ninety days, I think we should look at something within the, I mean, no more than sixty days to have an assessment, I mean, it shouldn't take longer than two months.
I mean, even if you do, if you do...
To determine whether or not you're gonna...
I think, I think if you guys did like sixty days, that'd be plenty of time, that way you can go ahead and order...
Time is not our friend here, is what I'm saying, so, you know, again, if it, whether it's to be repaired or demolished.
Sure.
I don't want it to demolish itself.
And, and the good thing is, if it's gotta be demolished, it's not a, uh, that's not a long process, I mean, it's pretty quick. We should try to get it knocked out, you know what I mean, so it's not difficult, so, um...
I would be agreeable with, with, uh, doing that and plus, uh, putting up this chain link fence in the next five to seven days.
That sounded like maybe a motion.
Mayor.
No.
No, we gotta close the hearing, bro.
But you had...
Well, mayor, we got one more, um, statement.
Evereston's tough.
Oh, okay.
Deborah Richardson, twelve oh-two Lane Street in Evereston, uh, I'm just wondering, when this kinda thing happens, do you all talk to the business owners around it? In other words, get their opinion, how do they feel? Do they have, you know, do they care one way or the other about knocking the building down? In other words, I guess, for Lupe, did you speak to the, not just the person across the street, but everyone in the area? You know, like, when you have, when you're gonna do certain things to properties, you have to contact people within, what, ninety feet, whatever? So have you, I'm just wondering what they've said, or have you not done that, or?
So I know that, I know that a police department and public works, they, they really helped us out on speaking to the owner of the east side wall, uh, and, and just coordinating with them, letting them know what's going on. And they were very appreciative of us letting us know, or letting them know with the barrels. In terms of public notification, um, the way the or- the ordinance is written, I mean, what you're referencing is like zoning amendments, where we notify up to two hundred or five hundred feet.
Yes.
Uh, with this current ordinance, the way it's written, um, once council makes a decision to either order repair or demolish, then we put an ad out on our local newspaper to get the entire city informed of that. But there's not necessarily a process written in to go X amount of feet, door to door, or letters for that matter. But there is a, an ad requirement, once the decision is made. So at the end of the sixty day or ninety day mark, uh, there'll be something in the examiner letting, letting the community know what's going on.
Okay, and, but that will be after decision's already been made. I'm wondering how the current, uh, people feel now, but that's just my comment, I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure that everyone who could be affected knows what's going on, I, I don't...
They gotta get involved like you, come to the meetings and learn about things.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, at this point I need to jump in, I think in view of some of the things that have been said tonight, I need to reduce myself on this issue.
Okay. All right, are y'all okay with closing the hearing at this point, or?
We'll make sure that, uh, uh, council member Guestman gets the appropriate paperwork.
Okay, we'll, we'll close the hearing at, at seven forty. All right, the action is to approve or deny an order to repair or demolish the structures located at two oh-two Holland Street in Evereston, Texas, seven eight six eight.
Question, you know, we have two councilmen have recused themselves, is this just for tonight, or if this come back, are you still recusing yourself, or?
Yeah, for this entire, for i- i- is, as long as it's, yeah, it, at least...
It would be for this entire matter unless circumstances change. For example, uh, unless, you know, uh, Guestor Engineering, it's not the engineer that does work on it. Councilmember Peterson has a family member that is, uh, real estate agent on the, um, property. So those circumstances could change, but likely not, um, so I would think it would be for the entire matter unless the circumstances change.
Small town.
All right, he- help me work on...
We're gonna put together something, maybe.
I'm, I'm working on a, a motion, a possible motion right now, um...
Beautiful. I, I think, uh, I, I would like to see that, uh, sixty days is fine to bring back, uh, a plan, and that, uh, within seven days, we have fencing around the building, uh, to secure it, or at least to prevent people from...
On what sides do you want, uh, you can just be specific on what sides, you know what I mean, to make sure, I can do the whole thing if you need, but really just, you know...
I don't think the backside, the east is the backside.
I would say on the sides that could possibly collapse.
I'll, I'll do all that.
The east and north.
Perfect.
Or one goes, then the other goes, right?
Do, do you wanna specify the height of the chain link fence?
So closing the rear, we would have to, and, uh, close the alley, um, so I don't know if that's something we wanna do. I mean, I guess ideally if we're gonna secure the building, doing the perimeter around it, um, I mean, not that the backside...
Yes, yeah, so I, I would suggest that we, um, temporarily close the alley, uh, and then we, the only way you gotta do three sides, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 I think that was, would be part of the motion.
And our safety, you think that's, y'all both, Jason, Mike, y'all think that's good, I mean, that's...
North, you mean?
Okay, I'm confused. Yeah, looking around, yeah.
What, eight foot, ten foot, tents?
Eight, I think eight, six, you can do six foot.
Six foot, yeah, six foot's a...
Normal construction fencing is six foot, the stuff that you see over, outside. I think that's what we're all kinda picturing here.
Yes, yes. And then also carry to, to direct city staff to start, send the paperwork to the new owner, once that, once we find out that happens.
If you let me know who to notify, I can do whatever, I mean, y'all can...
Probably Lupe.
Collison, okay, all right, how about this, this is a possible motion.
Oh, no, you lost it.
Oh, here we go, all right, um, most of, a motion could be made, uh, similar to this, I move to defer action on the order regarding two oh-two Holland Street for a period of sixty days, comma, conditioned on the property owner securing the property within seven days with a, say, six foot?
Mm-hmm.
Six foot chain link fence, and to also direct city staff to notify any new property owner of the substandard condition of the building at the appropriate time, allowing some discretion with the time period. Does that cover...
Did y'all wanna mention the side just there, with the fencing?
He's, he said secure, securing the building with a fence, right? Didn't that would, not part of your wording?
Securing the property on the east, north end.
What did you say, Mike? East, north and west?
With temporary closing alleyway.
And does it need to be a certain distance out from the buildings?
Yeah, well, I don't know.
Well, you don't just put it right up next to the building and run around.
So, just, I, I would just work with staff on that.
I'll just measure the barrels and we'll go that far.
Yeah, because it's not on, you're not put in on your property, you put in...
There's an engineer in here that may know the...
Reggie would...
So, I know Sandra's, she's, yeah, we'll figure it out.
So I'll actually, we'll make a suggestion, you said you're meeting out there Thursday with your guy? Ask him, go with his professional opinion on how far out you should go, tell him that you're, you need to secure this, and he'll either say outside the parking lot, or parking spots, or he'll say at the, uh, sidewalk line, but he'll be the one who's looking at it and kinda, yeah, be able to give you some good guidance.
Okay.
Would be my suggestion.
I think it makes smarter, I mean, I think it's smarter to get people off sidewalk, I don't think that's a bad thing, so, for the time being.
We'll just work with, with staff on that, be able to get that resolved.
East, north and west, right, east, north and west.
And then, uh, would you put like a stipulation till, so if I was to go to get it temporarily shared up and everything's good, then at that point, till we show proof that it's safe, I guess, you know, to kinda, then we can kinda remove that thing, or?
I think the unfortunate part for me is that you're not the owner.
Yeah.
And so I think we have to wait until that all happens.
We lose wait sixty days and then we'll kinda...
Yeah.
Okay, shall I try again?
Yes.
Um, I move to defer action on the order regarding two oh-two Holland Street for a period of sixty days, comma, conditioned on the property owner securing the property, including the building, on the east, north and west sides, within seven days with a six foot chain link fence, comma, and to direct ci- city staff to notify any new property owner of the substandard condition of the building at the appropriate time.
What about, they mentioned temporary closing the alley when they set off, do we need to mention that? Back on the east, which would encompass temporary closing the alley?
Not city doing that.
Do, do we have to go through the alley closing procedures for...
It's a temporary, so we can...
Probably emergency situation too, right?
It'll, it'll go through. Right.
Just what Carrie read, I'll put that in form of a motion.
The, but before we do that, I, um, we said that city staff was going to, uh, make the recommendation of how far out, away from the building, but really, I, I don't know, somebody's gonna make this recommendation to, toward the position of the fencing. So yes, we want fencing, but it has to be at a certain location, uh, that's safe, depending someone's...
What, city staff? We'll make sure that it's...
Yeah, I would be...
I don't know that all that matters, maybe we can...
I think the wording is vague enough where it covers someone making a determination.
Yeah, you got some discretion and, you know, do you, how much do you wanna insert yourself into the?
Yeah, not much.
You know, the...
Keep people safe.
What if the, what if the, yes, I would, uh, leave that primarily up to the property owner to make that determination, yeah.
All right, second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Harris, second by Mr. Holtz. Two.
Oh, defer action on the order regarding two oh-two Holland Street for a period of sixty days. For action on the order regarding two oh two Holland Street for a period of sixty days, comma conditioned on the property owner securing the building and property on the east, north and west sides within seven days with a six foot chain link fence, and to direct city staff to notify any new property owner of the substandard condition of the building at the appropriate time.
And it will reference the location as described, I guess, right?
Two oh two Holland Street is, is what the motion includes.
Alright. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ain't none, I believe that was three, we might want to raise our hands just to make sure we.
It was the three of us.
Okay. So it is unanimous.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank y'all, thank you. Thank you. Where's Lynn?
And Bernie, I will, Mr. Mayor, I'll get your paperwork together.
Item eight is conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comment and testimony for an amendment to the project plan, finance plan and expansion of the zone boundaries of the city of Arizona, tax increment reinvestment zone number one, consideration possible action on first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four, while I stand a minute. So we'll open the hearing at, uh, seven fifty-two.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, just to reiterate, this is what the TERRIS Board approved, uh, five thirty. Again, it is amending and expanding the boundary of the TERRIS, uh, which requires uh, an amendment to the project plan and finance plan, as well as the boundary map. And so, uh, behind you and hopefully in your, uh, computer screens, if I got the screen to work, you should see the, the new boundaries, which are only within the new ETJ line. So it adds to the rest of the Altamira property and some surrounding properties in the TERRIS that, uh, we think are strategic and, and may see some development in, in the near future. There's also an amendment to the ordinance, uh, we're doing some housekeeping. The previous, uh, ordinance, uh, outlined seven members for the TERRIS. And since City Council appointed itself to serve as the board, we're changing that to five, just so we don't have vacant seats. Uh, there's no other taxing entities that are participating in the TERRIS, so it makes sense just to reduce it to City Council.
But then it turns around and talks about the Board of Directors, and how they're selected and how they're, and everything else which is not what we've done. As the directors appointed, the odd number of positions shall be appointed for two-year terms. Mayor is authorized to nominate a point. Directors one through five of the Board of Directors, and it just, it seemed like the whole, the whole thing, we, we just went straight out and elected our chairman and, and the vice chairman. And this is, I have a whole page listed as Board of Directors, uh, talking about taxing units doing this and that and the other thing. I don't know if that's.
And, and the reason that's left in there, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Gessler, is that, uh, there is a January first, twenty twenty-four deadline by which another taxing unit could join theoretically. I think that's going to happen, but that's why that language was left in there, um, to, to allow for another Board of Director to, another director to be added to the board. Once that doesn't happen by that date, then we can.
Take all this out?
We could, yes, sir, we can come back and take all of that out.
We put it in parentheses in? You can't, you put this all in parentheses and say you.
We, yeah, we can, we can pull that out at a later.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, close the hearing? Close the hearing at seven fifty-five? Consideration of possible action on the first reading of ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-three, amending the project plan, finance plan, and expansion of the zone boundaries of the city of Arizona tax increment reinvestment zone number one.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-three.
Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Ms. Peterson, to approve on first reading ordinance ten thirty-four dash twenty-three. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Seeing none, item carried. Item nine, consideration of possible action to award contract for annual lawn care services for public grounds to J C Sand Dirt and Construction Services LLC in the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven eighty-one fifty.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jose Coronilla, Assistant Police Director. I'm here, uh, I'm going to have my glasses now. And I'm here to make a recommendation to, uh, hire a contractor for their lawn and care services. I'm going to give you a little bit of, uh, summary on this. For the last, uh, five years, this work has been completed by green teams for the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the contract term had reached its five-year limit this year, so we are required to bid the work again. At the bid opening in October twenty-fourth, we had four bidders, or four contractors to bid on this project. It was, uh, J C Construction for the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. Green Team's, um, amount was two hundred and eighty-three thousand, uh, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Uh, Landmark was at three hundred and eighty-one thousand, five, five hundred and eight. And the groundwork was seven hundred and twenty-one hundred, eight ninety. So, um, J C Construction was the lowest bidder. And, uh, this contract can be renewed up to five years if the contractors continues to perform the city staff standard. Uh, the city has worked with this contract before, uh, with good results. Because Mr. Eduardo, uh, Sid- uh, Simadomo is here, is the CEO for the company. Uh, two reference were called, the J C Construction currently performs mowing contracts for, and both gave us a good reviews of his work. Therefore, city staff has recommended awarding, uh, this contract to J C Construction for the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six.
The, this is dumb, I'm sorry, but the two things that I didn't see in the agreement, and maybe they're there. Does this company, the new company, have uniforms that they have to wear while performing these jobs? So in other words, something that identifies themselves? And if so, I didn't see that in here, but, uh, so that's question one, and then the second one would be vehicle identification. So any vehicle that would be used by this company, like Green Team stands out, and so you know that it's the city's contractor. Do these vehicles have to be required to have the same identification?
We are, like I said, Mr. Simadomo, we're going to probably talk on behalf of that, on that. Uh, we have not, um, I'm sure that they have it.
So you have some uniform shirt that's bright green or neon green or something, or?
We are, we're nothing on the construction list, twenty years old. We know what that will, the same thing on the sign from the vehicles and everything.
I'd like to, if that's not in the agreement, can we add that into the agreement?
It, it is not in the agreement.
It's not.
It, the, uh, the uniform requirement and the identification of the vehicles, um, I reviewed it again, I don't recall it being in there.
I, I didn't see it in my review either, and I just, I think that's important, especially, uh, like at Mans Park, when folks are out there mowing, people are driving by, it'd be great to be able to clearly identify that that's our new contractor, uh, and that they are, you know.
That's fair.
Are, are you okay with adding that to the?
As far as the, the scope, is there any major differences in what work's going to be done in the new contract versus the old contract?
I'll tell you, one of them, uh, that we asked to add to it was, uh, related to, uh, Cedar Creek.
Okay.
And, and so that, that is included in.
Oh, good, okay, good.
That Cedar Creek is going to be.
Yeah, the creek bank along Boruli Avenue. Number, line number twenty-two.
So that's a plus. So, and, and, but everything else, there's nothing that, that, that was cut? That you know of? Except maybe the airport, maybe the airport.
Nothing, nothing was cut, we just went for, we went for, um, instead of mowing like the city hall two, two times a week, we went to once a week.
Yeah.
So there's a couple where.
Frequency, yeah.
Frequency, frequency changed, but everything else is, uh, still stay the same.
Yeah, I just want to make sure like the entrances at, at Highway six, you know, like, everything that we had been doing before, we're going to continue to do.
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, all of the property that they're not cutting, the city cuts?
All the properties that, uh, all the public, uh, properties that are in here as the city properties.
Okay, what about, um, I'm going to use a word, Grace Park?
Yeah, Grace Park.
I didn't see it in here anymore.
No, Grace Park, we've been mowing that part, the city, the city's been doing that.
Okay.
The big park behind, um, yeah, Grace Park, yes.
Okay, so the city will continue to cut that?
City will continue to cut that.
Yeah, we, we have a big mower that mows airport and some other locations.
Uh, what, what city is this company from?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
What city is this company from?
Oakley.
Jose, he needs to come to the microphone.
Hi, everybody. Uh, my name is Eduardo, we are a new company, and, uh, we are from Oakley. So we are trying to work all, you know, um, closed areas around there, so, yeah. If you have any questions?
That downtown planter boxes probably doesn't include the new ones. I guess.
No.
Does.
Planting boxes.
Okay, okay. Okay, good. And, uh, I assume it also includes the maintenance of the, uh, what about, what about, um, irrigation?
Irrigation has always been performed by the city, um, we could do, we do that at house, and if we have to hire a contractor, we can use them as a separate.
That's separate.
Separate.
So the cost is staying the same?
Basically.
Yeah, and, uh, like I said, we budgeted, uh, for, uh, a cost increase and, uh, and actually the, the cost is actually going down, I think we, uh, two hundred and sixty, I think is what we pay, what our current contract is, so it's actually a decrease, uh, but we are cutting back on frequency.
Yeah.
Uh, but we are adding, um, Cedar Creek, which is a huge piece.
Yeah. And if we realize that cutting back on the frequency is not good, let's say for July fourth or something like that, then we can have them.
So, yeah, and also if August horse, we're out there mowing dirt, so, yeah, but no good, yeah, so.
So this contract is, the contract is based on thirty-nine mowings a, a year. At the end of the day, there's going to be some kind of payment agreement worked out with him, but it happens all the time, that there's an extra mowing ordered, or a mowing not needed, and those kind of shuffle around a little bit. It's, it's based assuming thirty-nine, and then it's going to be what it needs to be.
Mr. Mayor, I move we award the contract to J C Sand Dirt and Construction Services for the annual lawn care services for public grounds to J C Sand Dirt and Construction with the addition of, um, uniforms and vehicle identification.
Do we need an effective date in the motion, or?
No, it's whatever the contract.
In the amount of two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven eighty-one fifty to begin.
No.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fultz, second by Mr. Gessler, to award the contract J C Sand Dirt and Construction Services with amendments as, as stated in the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Seeing none, item carried.
May. Go ahead. I didn't have a chance to ask a question before we approved the contract.
Okay.
And my question was, one of the big pet peeves that I've had with our lawn service, and I've mentioned this before, when they run over a newspaper and it goes off to everywhere, is that going to be part there to pick up the trash that they cut up, or they just roll over?
Yeah.
Thank you for that, yeah, the, they will be picking up everything, and the good thing about this contract is that if we don't perform, um, the way wanted, it can be, it can be determined, it can be terminated within, I mean, whatever, it's not, it's not really a day. You can do year by year, if we don't, even for them, uh, it's basically the same thing. So if we don't like the way they perform, we can hire another contractor, so. We're not, we're not engaged for five years per se.
Well, I hope it all works out.
I think so too, I hope so too. I would give more than five years.
The, the contract specifically says that the areas that they mow have to be maintained in a presentable fashion, including, uh, litter and debris pickup.
Mac, that's for you.
Mac. The contract says that all the areas that the, uh, the contractor will be mowing have to be maintained presentably, including litter and debris pickup, so it's covered. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Item ten, consideration of possible action on resolution seven fifty-one dash twenty-three, authorizing the mayor to sign the engagement letter with Belt, Belt Harris.
Bahatchuk.
Bahatchuk. L L L P for audit services for the episode, season episode fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. We are seeking approval on resolution seven fifty-one twenty-three, um, in order to engage Belt Harris Bahatchuk, um, to begin, uh, their audit for our fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, this firm has provided our annual financial statement audit, uh, since twenty sixteen. We originally entered into an agreement with them back in May of twenty sixteen. The agreement was for one year with, for one year subsequent years as an option. And we resigned with them for FY twenty-one and twenty-two, um, for the FY twenty-one and twenty-two financial statement audits. I've included in the, the summary and recommendation a comparison of the fee increases, um, for FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three. Um, as you can see, it's, hasn't gone up significantly, and it is well with, uh, within our budgeted amount for the, for the year. So, uh, and further, um, we are requesting to have a new audit manager assigned to our engagement. So the gentleman that presented back in July, um, we have specifically requested that he be the, uh, manager on our engagement.
Why, why is that? Because you've had, the previous lady has been on the engagement for X amount of years, and so i- ideally you want to switch that up, um, and so you don't have the same view, um, that, um, when you're using the same company, uh, X amount of years. So it, it's generally a requirement if you, so for instance, how do we bid this out? Uh, and, um, they, uh, we, lowest bidder was the same firm, that would have been one of the requirements, they would have had to switch up, uh, their.
Partner.
Audit, their partner and their audit manager, so that you had a fresh eyes on it. And so that, that's what we're asking for, is, uh, we ask for them to switch it up, so you get fresh eyes on our, on our books.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution seven fifty-one dash twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foltz, second by Ms. Peterson to re- um, approve Resolution seven fifty-one dash twenty-three. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, I don't carry. Item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve financials for the fiscal year to date as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Um, so yes, we are requesting approval on, uh, financials as they are right now for, uh, the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So, uh, please bear in mind that there are going to be some adjustments as I prepare the, um, work papers for the financial audit. I've put in kind of a high-level table right here for you to see, um, how close, uh, we were to, to our budgeted amounts. So these percentages are based off of the end-of-year estimates, um, that were presented when we, uh, presented the FY twenty-four budget. Um, so it's a comparison of those end-of-year estimates and, uh, the actuals. So, um, I guess the big, the big thing is the expenditures. In the general fund, for the most part, we did stay, um, well below budget. Um, in total for the general fund, we had nine percent of our, our budget remaining at year-end. You'll note that there's like a big outlier. Um, one of those is that an item was not cleared from our accounts receivable aging, um, whenever it was paid in FY twenty-one, so that was before my arrival. And that was part of the cleanup when I prepared the, um, work papers for our auditors last year. The next one is our debt service. Yeah, so, um, and the reason why that one is, um, not within budget, it's because of the timing of, uh, an interest payment. Capital projects, as you're aware, a lot of our projects weren't able to begin. And, uh, so because of that, um, you'll see that expenditures were significantly less than what was budgeted. On our grants fund, um, it does require that I go in and reconcile and move items from general fund to Fund Five Forty. Um, on our non-major fund expenditures, we were under budget by sixty-four percent. And, um, so there were various reasons for this. The work for the two roads at the cemetery and the segment on Section C had not been initiated, as well as preservation costs for the Horlock House. And, uh, the wayfinding project not being along in progress as anticipated. Um, in our enterprise funds, uh, you will note that we are under budget. You know, there weren't projects that were started when they needed to be started. Um, and also depreciation has not been calculated yet. Again, that's one of those year-end, um, fina- financial audit, um, steps that will need to be taken. And lastly, for our EDC, costs associated with Neon Cloud did not occur. Um, additionally, training, advertising, and professional fees were less than what were planned. So that is why fifteen percent of their budget, uh, remained at year-end. I know it's a lot of numbers, so if you do want to sit down and discuss them, we can go over them in detail.
Staff will continue to work on trying to find, um, uh, easier ways to present financials to you over the next year. Um, so, uh, we know that we haven't presented something in, in a little while, and so we want to make sure we bring something to you. Uh, in, in product, uh, kind of a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. And so we'll continue working on trying to get something to you a little bit easier to understand with, um, a lot less detail.
How is the grants calculation different from all the others?
Uh, so we, we didn't have the, part of, of grants is you can't recognize the revenue until you spend it. So if the projects didn't begin, then we can't recognize that revenue.
So for instance, we received the ARPAs funds, we've actually received that cash on hand, but we've not spent that ARPAs funds yet because we slated some of it for our water projects as well as possible purchasing of land. Uh, and so since we've not spent the expenditure, you can't recognize the revenue. So it's on, uh, the, the revenue is there, we've received it, it's in cash.
It's unearned revenue.
But it's unearned revenue, it shows up on the balance sheet as an asset and as a liability.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the financials for the fiscal year to date as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Foltz to approve the financials for fiscal year to date as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, I don't carry.
Thank you.
You. Item twelve is a consent agenda, which is, which consists of the minutes for October twenty twenty-three, municipal court report for October twenty-three, first reading of ordinance ten thirty-five dash twenty-three, tax year twenty twenty-three tax roll, ordinance ten thirty-six dash twenty-three, first reading approving the twenty-three tax roll for Brazos County portion, and Resolution seven fifty-three dash twenty-three casting votes for board of directors for twenty-four, twenty-five, Grimes Central Appraisal District.
Mayor and council, um, uh, our legal counsel's got a change on one of the items, I think he wants to make note of before you make a motion.
It looks, it looks to me like on the, uh, the ordinance that the appraiser, the appraiser recommended, it has the, in the backup documentation, uses the figure of three million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. And then the ordinance says three million, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five, eighty-nine and fifty-two cents. So, uh, it appears to me that the number should be the three, six, oh, one, six, two, two, and fifty-six cents.
And that's for Grimes or, that's for Grimes County?
For Grimes County, yeah, that's the Grimes County portion.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve A, B, C, and D for the consent agenda. Go ahead and go.
Show move.
Yes, sir.
Second, sorry, hello.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by Mr. Foltz to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D. Any further discussion?
What about E?
No, he, he's pulling, he's pulling that.
He's pulling that to take individual action.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Seeing none, I don't carry, go to consent agenda item E.
Mayor, may I ask you second that motion real quick?
Uh. I did, Mr. Foltz.
Thank you.
Now I'll entertain a motion for item E that would have the, uh, correction as described by legal counsel.
That's not E. E is casting votes. He should pull D, I mean, pull C.
That, that's right.
He said, I think he did A, B.
A, B, C.
C and E.
He said E, not D.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so D.
D is what he's pulled to make the change. Whichever one, yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah, that's what it was.
So the, so the, um, the correct number in the ordinance should be three, six, oh, one, three million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents, which should be the number used in ordinance number ten thirty-five dash twenty-three. That's the change recommended by legal counsel.
Okay, which is the Grimes County portion?
Yeah, item, item D is a dog.
And that's the Brazos County.
These.
No, it's C, he needs to pull C. The first motion was for A, B, D, and E.
The intent of the motion was to pull the four that did not apply to the change. Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Leaving C as the one that was out.
Okay.
No, it should be D.
Yeah, yeah, so you're, so you're, so the, the, it's switched up.
D is Brazos.
No, that's on your, that's what you're looking at. That's the, that's the right, the actual agenda item, the actual agenda has it as.
They don't match?
No, they do not.
Okay.
That's, that's the problem.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to split the buyer, which one you're, which one you're doing. Which is Grimes? It's the Grimes one.
It's, yeah, it would be item B, ordinance number ten thirty-five dash twenty-three, changing the number to three million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
Okay, we, we, we did I, we did A, B, C, and D correct earlier?
So we did the minutes, we did the municipal court report, you did the first reading of ordinance ten zero three six two three, which is Brazos County, and you did Resolution seven five three dash two three, which was the board of directors for Grimes Central Appraisal District.
So do we need to amend the motion original to make it A, B, and D?
No, it should be A, B.
A, B, C.
And E.
And E.
A, B, C, and E, leaving D.
I'll entertain a motion to amend the original motion, which is the consent agenda for items A, B, C, and E.
Show move.
Motion by Mr. Gessner, second by.
Second.
Ms. Peterson to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and E. Correct?
A, B, C, and E.
A, B, C, and E. Any further discussion? Seeing none, item, um, uh.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Uh, uh, everybody in favor of that?
Aye.
No, no opposition, okay. Now we're gonna go to item D. All on its own, correct? With the correction that you stated earlier. I'll entertain a motion for that. And that would be, uh, ordinance ten thirty-six dash twenty-three.
Ten thirty-five.
Five dash twenty-three.
I don't know what happened.
Even though it says.
Yeah, both of these papers are.
On one page.
Not saying what you're saying. But I'll move to approve C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foltz, second by Mr. Gessner to approve ordinance, I'm gonna make sure I get the number right at least, ten thirty-five dash twenty-three. Approving tax year twenty twenty-three tax roll of the Grimes County, it is the Grimes County portion, right?
Grimes County.
Yes, sir. That's right, okay.
With the amount
Of?
Of.
Three million, six hundred and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents.
That. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any pro, any opposed? Seeing, I don't carry.
Yeah, that's what he's looking at.
Right.
Sorry for the confusion there.
Okay, it's okay.
It's just getting late, and I'm not dealing with it very well. Okay, let's see. Item thirteen, uh, is necessary to go into executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. City council shall meet in executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property for the purpose of discussion and deliberation regarding city and municipal potential acquisition of real property for city projects and purposes. And the time is eight twenty-six. Okay, well, uh, I think the time is seven fifty. Eight fifty, yeah, I was gonna say, you did fix the clock, didn't you?
I did fix it.
Then we will reconvene in open session. Not hearing any motions, so we are adjourned.